Good morning. I'm going to call this November 2nd, 2021, regular Hancock County Commissioners Meeting. Order?
I'm going to move to approve the agendas presented.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll dial in one gentleman, public comment. Is anybody this morning would like to make a public comment? Hearing them, we want to approval for the last meeting's minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the October 19th special meeting as presented.
Seconded.
Discussion. Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have a couple of recognitions this morning. Two corrections officers neither were able to attend. We'd like to make those recognitions public. We'll send those certificates up to the jail administrator to give them personally. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I'm going to move to recognize and thank Corrections Officer Richard Bronson for his five years of service to Hancock County.
Seconded.
Discussion. Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to move to recognize and thank Corrections Officer Michael Butters for his five years of service to Hancock County.
Seconded.
Discussion. Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carry. Have we haven't signed those, have we? Have we signed those?
Yeah.
No question. Well, we signed them months ago, didn't we? It's been so long, I can't remember. Okay. Morning Kitty.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm doing well. You ready?
I'm ready when you are.
Commissioners, this morning, we are pleased to request from the Commissioners their official approval toward the following nonprofit organization. Illicit funding is part of the American Rescue Plan Nonprofit Grant Program for the Bar Harbor Garden Club in the amount of $2,743. And I believe Jamie is here to accept that award.
Okay, we went out of order a little bit here, but how about we take that one? First, I'm going to move to acknowledge the award of an IR revenue loss grant to Bar Harbor Garden Club in the amount of $2,743, supported by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded.
Discussion. Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Face the camera. Congratulations.
Secondly, we are pleased to request from the Hancock County Commissioners their approval toward the following nonprofit organization. Illicit funding is part of the American Rescue Plan Grant Program to the Orleans Historical Society, the amount of $1,578.79.
Somebody else.
Walters here.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
It was 79 cents or 59 cents?
Sorry, I am sorry.
Not 79. I'm going to move to acknowledge the award of an IR revenue loss grant to Orleans Historical Society in the amount of $1,578.79. This is awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded.
Discussion. Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Andrew, stand right here and turn around and face the camera. Hold that big check up so you can see. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Oh, on the agenda. Okay, so it's 79 cents.
We should carry that, let's just see how weak you are. You got it. You casted that.
Don't cast many, but thank you.
Okay, Kitty. He has this pay. Premium pay for communities. I looked quickly through what submissions had been given us this morning. I'm very discouraged to see that none of these communities listed an amount that they're going to contribute. For me, who lobbied, had to put this questionnaire out. That was my intent, was to see how much this would cost us. And it completely failed. Because it really wasn't who was going to get it, but how much it would cost us to give it to those communities.
I think, I think we ended up asking the specific names to make sure that that list was there. And then I think maybe there's just an assumption that they wanted to see what that number might look like, right? Because we did cap it. So if we needed, I guess, to do the math, we could take the cap that we said we'd run.
My problem is, though, are they telling us that they're not going to contribute anything? They want us to contribute at all? Is that the message they're sending us? Because I can tell you that my feeling is, is that's not happening.
Right. Right. I think this was step one, right? Who really is interested, who's really committed? If you are, give us the list. That's how I'm going to read this, right? I'm going to say optimistic and say... And then the next step is to, if we ran some general numbers. But I think we've got more information we're not going to need to get. One of the municipalities even said, I'm not sure of the dates you want us to run this by and how much that would be. So some of them are even still looking at it as a, are you doing this by the number of hours working? Right? So I just think it's still a little bit nebulous. And I think we need to just firm that up if we decide to move forward on what those actual costs would be.
I think I'd read too much into what you've done back so far. I mean, it's going to, it's not something that I think the towns can necessarily commit a dollar amount to right at this moment. Which, right now, this is kind of like, just kind of moving, moving steps to kind of see where we'd be. So, from the information we have now, Kitty, what would you, where would you take it from here to start, like, getting better information or better numbers for us to be?
I mean, we did cap it at end of October. So there's our first decision point. Do we do another push to see if there's other interests? If, if not, then do we just start to work with these five towns and narrow this down to say, from this period to this period, you know, those that meet this criteria, you know, we would, we would match 2:1, what you're going to input with the max, right? That would allow us to get the numbers that we'd be looking for, what the cost would be.
Or, you know, with only five towns out of...
Thirty-two.
Yeah, thirty-something. You know, do we move forward at all? Because, you know, that's the other side of this. You know, maybe those funds are better. Maybe their priorities are elsewhere, which we have to respect.
Right.
So, you know, that's why I'm not really sure. You know, I'm not inclined to keep moving forward. We went fishing, there's five out of thirty-something fish. I'm not sure that's enough to really, for me to say, okay, this is a priority for them.
I mean, and to that end, there is an opportunity to make some calls on those who did not respond and say, did you receive it? Are you just not interested? It might at least give us that information that they're not interested. I mean, I did hear, I think, from Scott that he's heard some feedback that we need to sort of firm up how stuff comes from me to be really clear that I, that this is for the Commissioners, that they might have thought that coming from me wasn't legitimate. So, you know, maybe there's some of that. Oh, it's just from somebody I don't know, ignore it. But maybe if it came on Letterhead or something, then maybe they pay more attention to it.
Well, with that said, maybe the next step is, you know, just touch base with the other communities and see if there's interest. There may not, there may not be. They may have other priorities.
That's right.
Well, one of the shakers and movers of this was, the second goes was, they didn't even submit. What does that mean? I mean, they certainly know your role.
Exactly.
They certainly know the intent of what we, the criteria, the questionnaire was.
I, my feeling is, we set a date. The date's come. You know, we formally did it. Maybe we, you know, reach out informally and say, you know, do you have interest or not? Date's come and gone. If they say no, then we have our answer. But I, you know, I really don't see a need to start the effort over or, you know, because we know their funds are more limited. And they may have other priorities for them. And we need to respect that.
Did they get the written criteria that we developed?
Yes.
Because I got some help from retired fire chief and whatnot on how to develop the criteria for firefighting. And one of them was just be sure that it's certified. We get a list from a couple of towns, so people will have certified. I don't, I'm really kind of discouraged. I mean, this... I don't, I'm not sure if I can agree with you, John. I think, I think there's been a lot of talk about this, a lot of information. I think they should have, they should have been aware that anything coming from the county with this under York, Letterhead, or Alles and whatnot, regarding this was as a result of this discussion.
The letter that went out, I don't think, you know, to your point, I don't think there was much info here any of them, who was coming.
Well, I didn't either, but I just want to recognize that, that, you know, if they're getting 100 emails, makes you wonder for me that maybe, you know, that it's not reacted to as well as, but...
I think the most, I go to great to today is, is that if you want to go back, talk to these five communities. And say, the purpose of this questionnaire was to find out how much you people were to pony up so that we could see how much our contribution would be before we make a decision on whether or not we want to see. Then that's fine, because the deadline is coming on. Everybody knew the deadline was October 31st. And we've discussed this no less than three times on the agenda as far as that deadline and what we were after. I, I think Paul may be right, that they may have, they might, they'd love to see some premium pay for their employees, but on the same token, they may have different priorities on what they want to do with their funds. If that be the case, so we, we got to challenge that, you know, so...
Well, and broadband is a perfect example. You know, they, I don't know, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but we got very little feedback, and with very little feedback, I, you know, I'm hesitant to say, okay, five communities did answer. Let's work with these five communities. And, you know, if it was, you know, first, where there was only five communities that didn't, then I might feel a little more warm and fuzzy about it. But it is what it is. I say, let's move on. You know, having heard the rest of this.
Were we looking for a majority?
I don't know, I don't know what we're looking for, Kitty. My personal thing was, is that I want to know what we were committing ourselves to before we agreed to this. We're going to hear a presentation this morning from Mike, which will have another ARPA project. It's quite honestly that combined with broadband, with what we have already spent and whatnot, is going to amount to a considerable amount of total funds. And I'm not, I'm not prepared today to commit ourselves to a project. We don't know how much it's going to cost us. And so, I don't, I'm somewhere between, that's it, I've had it, we're not going to do anything, to at least finding out if these five communities are willing to pony up something, some of their own ARPA funds towards bringing it paid. John?
I don't have any problem with sticking to the deadline, really. I mean, deadline's a deadline. If you didn't want to spend the time to do it, if you feel it was your priority for how you're going to use the money, that's fine. But we did have some towns that didn't spend the time to do it, even though right now we don't really have enough information from those five towns to commit to anything or know where we really are. We have to dig in a little bit more to, to find out that, to find out that information.
So you would be willing to, to take another step to find out what these five?
Yeah.
If that be the case, Kitty, my personal opinion is, is that, there's two things. First of all, go back and refine your list based upon the criteria. Now, don't submit frivolous names, the names that you know and have been in the criteria. And then tell us how much money the towns will pony up out of their ARPA funds so that we can see what the 2:1 match would, would cost us. And that's going to come sooner than later. I'm not too sure, Kitty, that might, with five towns, it might take a personal call.
Yep, absolutely. I now know who those directly came from, so...
I understand doing that letterwork, it makes sense to me. But for me, the fact that it was just five towns out of thirty-something tells me that priorities lay elsewhere. I don't want to further waste their time, you know? Let's say those five give us everything that we need to do it. Question, as I say here today, is, would I be, you know, do I think that that's a good use of our, of ARPA funds? I'd have to say, no. Your question was, were we looking for a majority? I don't think we had ever really talked about that. But in my mind, I'm not sure the word is majority, but more than five. So I, I understand where you're both coming from. To me, we're just further wasting their time, because I don't think I'm going to support, you know? Because I think it's going to be enough money that it's robbing, or it could be enough money that, you know, we'd be taking from another priority.
And I don't think so. I think the fact that nobody submitted a contribution out of their own ARPA funds is an indication that they really don't want to spend this for theirs. They really like to have us contribute towards their people. They don't want to contribute. And I don't blame them. I mean, would we have, would we have given an amount to our employees if our ARPA funds had only been a couple million dollars?
Yes.
No. We wouldn't. And that's the problem there, is that when they get less than a million dollars to some large communities, you know, and they're saying, that's, you know, we've got different priorities. If we got 10 million, yes, we'd give some, give some premium money. But we didn't get 10 million, so... I, I would like, either by general consensus or by a vote this morning, though, for the board, to publicly say that we're not going to pay 100% of the community's premium pay for public safety employees.
Well, didn't we do that?
Don't think we've ever done that officially.
Well...
Well, if nothing else, it's reaffirmative. That's the case, if you, if you agree with that. Because if the response Kitty gets is that we'd like to have you pay 100%, say, well, at their meeting on the 2nd, unequivocally said, no, we're not going to pay 100%.
I think what you did say was, this is criteria we've established as a starting point. It may change. That is, that is what you said. You didn't, you know, you wanted to make sure you had that question.
I would give it that.
Okay, so by general consensus, Kitty, if that's their, if that's their comment, they know, you know, that's, they made it perfectly clear that this is a match. And also, we're not committing ourselves to this. Need to know what it's going to cost us. Say, yes, we're going to do this. So that's the other. Now, if they say, well, we can't, we can't give you that amount till next March during town meeting, well, it's too late for us. We're not going to wait till next March. I don't know whether or not we're going to do this, because we're going to have the ARPA funds committed by then.
And I don't think that it's trying to communicate that we have a very small response.
I am, I am curious as to why Elsawton, in motion, made a passionate presentation and request, so...
Well, but he did say that, you know, he, he, the board hadn't really discussed this at great length, so...
In the city council?
The council, yeah.
Well, that is, they only got their money, I think, after the speech. So I mean, it is kind of, it just got... Was ever in question, attention, when they were getting it. So I mean, I knew what you're saying. Elsawton knew they were going to get even 6,000, 6 months, 8 months. All right, so you think Kitty has enough direction now since she conceived that this?
Well, I think we're really on the same page here, which is...
Yeah. I think we need to fish harder for more people.
Yeah.
But we can, we spot back to people to try and firm something up.
Yeah, for, and we did, you know, we are apprehensive, because there was such a small... I think we agree there.
Kitty, you think, you think you know what you have?
Absolutely.
That's something we should be able to get there next meeting, I would think.
Yeah.
I have a spreadsheet here on... Bill, in your package, you have a spreadsheet on the lost revenue. Today, we have spent 132,000, 167, if we, of the total 300,000 that we, at least, we didn't want to exceed 3. And I gotta believe that we're winding down, don't you, Kitty?
Yep, I have one, two now that are just waiting for further information. The, the last one came in yesterday, but it's definitely...
Close to the 10, no?
I, one of my, I have no idea. They just put 10 on there without any, any thought, so, right? And I think our deadline on those was the end of...
Somewhere in here, Scott, did you have a... This is November 30th, the other one was October 30th.
So Scott, you have a summary report on ARPA funds?
Yep.
That sort of leads us to our next item. Write that summary report.
Well, it's the broadband, and I was looking at total expenses to date. So on the third sheet, page one of the expense summary. It appears that we've spent $305,000 in personal services, something?
That would be the savings for the premium pay.
Oh, oh, okay.
And you look down further, which I believe that's all for Kitty, party business services.
And we don't have a breakdown that tells us all that, do we?
I'm not here, but I can get you what I mean. I don't believe we paid any other consulting today.
Well, we're going to have, we're going to have John, right?
Yeah, his contract should be budgeted in there.
Gentlemen, are you interested in more detailed information as to how we're spending this? You care, whether or not, you want to know the difference between Kitty's consulting fees and John's consulting fees?
We sort of know what those are because of the contract. You're saying just for reporting purposes?
Yeah, in other words, Scott will, I'm confident Scott will modify this to, you know, whatever we want to see for information.
I'm ambivalent, if it's easy, sure. Yeah, I know what dollar amounts are, but...
Scott, could you do that, like, in the 311? So 310 would be Kitty, 311 would be John. And we could have this contractual consultants fee separated out. I'm going to ask you this question every once, if you don't change that. If you don't change personal services 600 to premium pay, it hasn't paid. I'm going to ask you, what's that going to mean? If you could just clarify what that is. You don't see any other personal services other than that, do you?
None at this time.
Now, gentlemen, do you understand what server upgrade is under reserves?
Yeah, that's the server upgrade we're going to contribute to, to our funds paid for ITs, for the... Speed, so...
It's building, is that what it is?
We had a presentation.
Yeah, that's the, the big, the big server upgrade. And one of the benefits is to bring, spell it over here, but it has, yeah. It's actually the overall IT.
And that's happening as we, as we speak, huh?
Yes.
So that's good. Okay, gentlemen, anything else as regards to the summary, expense summary?
No.
If not, let's move into the discussion of broadband.
Can I just touch on one point?
Yes.
As we wind down this nonprofit program, I think it'd be nice to have a good wrap-up. This has gone to a lot of organizations and nonprofits who really needed that funding. And we think it's to be applauded. So I think it'd be nice, even if it's on the front page of the website, or we do an article or something that sort of wraps up, here's a list of the organization that we have helped with these funds.
That's very good, I think.
Kitty, are that kind of not working on that?
So I have a quick agenda that I'll kind of breeze through. How much time I have for you guys?
Still, all the time you need.
So we did the first community outreach, which was a public meeting, the 10:25 last Monday. They had 15 communities show up, which was good. There was about 40 people, I'd say, on the phone, all representing between us, communities, so... What was interesting is they all seemed to have started. All of them that showed up had something they already started. Right? There was some path along the way to broadband, so I think they were looking for, okay, what's the step? And hearing about wanting, right, to face it, well, funding, what's that mean? So that was good, though, to get their opinions and see where they were at and understand them.
So John, I thought it was, I thought it was short on detail. Did you, did you pick up the detail that you needed to understand what each community, where they were in the process?
Not on that meeting, but sent those. You jump in, you have it, but so... Yes, yeah.
I mean, I was pleased to see that many people and communities show up. But for me, I didn't give it enough detail.
Yeah, no, that comes in the individual, individual meetings.
Okay.
Which I'll get into here. The next step, I can talk to Scott Kitty, spoke briefly the other day, is reaching out to those that didn't show up, right? And what are some other ways we can have another public here, people that may not have started broadband? Or since then, I don't know, may not need to, because it's already stuff that's being completed, right? So some communities, it may already be in a situation where they're not going to potentially go down this, this project, but that's because other folks are already taking care of it. So found that out as well.
Do you think that some communities are settling or underserved?
No.
In other words, the communities that are not responding because they're up and running, uh...
Maybe also, yep, that's exactly.
No sense.
Or they're underserved currently, but there's already a plan, at least taken care of. From service providers, so... Some of that work already been done. And I mean, let's face it, this has been going on for years, years, right? This has just happened to be a focus over the last couple of years. The unfortunate COVID, education, healthcare, everything, everybody's trying to do at home. Brought a light to it, so now there's funding behind it, a lot more funding. So that's why, even though there's more funding now, there already has been funding through the years, right, federal funding, and so some communities have already...
And as you query these communities, and you find a community that's done nothing, and don't appear to be planning on anything, what is, what do you think our role should be with that community? In other words, it's up to you to start something before we?
That's correct. Also, you can do it as a guide.
So, in other words, once we find out that they're not doing anything, they don't plan to do anything, we just move on. So, so in other words, once we find out that they're not doing anything, they don't plan to do anything, we just move on, right?
We capture them, unless, you know, we redefine our scope a little bit and say, let's, you know, try to help pull them along, and that may be an option as well, because sometimes what you run into is it may be, um, the council may not want to do anything. But there are people in the community to do, right? So we might have to look at, uh, is there, you know, a form of broadband committee that's not getting anywhere? Right, what is that, one of those speed bumps that they're running into, one of those obstacles? So I, I thought those will come out, I don't know if there's anybody that doesn't want to do anything, uh, but some people don't know where to start. Just.
Well, I guess that's my opinion, this, if we have all the money we needed.
Yeah.
We could get right in there and encourage these people, but we don't. So do we dedicate those to people who are underserved, those people who are working hard to get a adequate service? As opposed to, once we find out a community isn't doing anything, they don't plan to do anything, we just take them off the list?
If we got an absolute from that, I would say yes, I don't know that we get an absolute.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, Bill.
Speaking for the UT, I have, uh, funds for broadband in both, uh, both of our TIFs of up to five hundred thousand dollars. We used, spent ten thousand of it to get broadband extended into Fletcher's Landing. But there were a lot of other areas that would like to have broadband, but, for example, in Franklin. Places in Township Nine would like to have broadband. But there's nothing I can do to get it for them, because the broadband stops in Franklin about a mile from the, uh, town UT line. Franklin would like to extend it somehow, but again, there's nothing we can do with that UT money outside of the unorganized territory.
Okay, Miller, you and John have never spoken?
No.
You, you know Miller, John?
I do not.
Miller Billings is our UT director?
Okay.
And, uh, so you've got five hundred in each TIF, Miller?
Yes.
Total of a million?
Yes.
Okay.
And I always spend so far as just under ten thousand.
I don't think.
Yes.
Hey, John, there's a.
There you go.
There you go.
I didn't reach out.
Yep, you, you and John need to get together, Miller, and, uh, discuss that, because. Now, to me, that sounds exactly like we, we get involved, we helped get that last mile in Franklin done, UT picks up the cost of that getting it where it's gonna go through the TIF monies, I mean. That to me is, is a great way to spend our, don't you think, Dylan?
Yes, definitely.
Good. Okay, put that on your plate.
We interrupted.
Those are good interruptions, that's, that's the context we're trying to find, right, that's what we're gonna do, you know, it's a, it's a process, this isn't overnight, this is a process of reaching out. You know, so like you said, I think we ended up with, let's follow up to those, let's get to a point where we know, you know, who's got something going on, and I can report on, you know, each of those as we go. And, you know, give you guys a, a report, if you know, every other couple of weeks, and says, okay, here, here's who we're engaged with, and that's where we're at. Does that make sense to you?
So you're pleased with the outcome and they gave you the content, contacts to start, start formulating some of the recommendations in the future?
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, at that meeting, you know, I didn't kind of get down through it, but there was. Uh, you know, we have already spoken to, and these are the folks that are already out of the way, uh, Brooklyn Sedgwick, uh, Lemoine, had a conversation with them, Swans Island, by Harbor, I'm going there next, in Trenton this next week. Then I might talk to the consultants, say, well, surveying or when, we have consultants already engaged and maybe they'll set. Um, is there, Brooklyn, Southside, New York, Hill, Ellsworth, right, so those are the Q, Q communities, and a lot of those are already represented on the call, some are not, but most are on the call, so those are the ones we know that we've already reached out to. And there's a couple of us, I get emails either from Scott or Kitty, that, you know, because they don't know me yet at times, uh, but after that call, you know, a lot of them reached out, reached out to that community, obviously, we know that worked. And I was able to follow up with them, so that's, that's kind of those next steps, is to understand, okay, let's get a, you know, get a feel for who else is involved, and we'll say something going on, and thus, where are they all at, because they are vastly different, right? They're a different, uh. Let's say, there are different points on their broadband journey, is what it comes down to, like you said.
You recall, you recall where Brooklyn was in this, you recall where they were in that process?
Yep.
Yeah, remember the gentleman that lived down, probably down on Naskake Point or something, had ten out of status, he needed it because of their businesses when they came here?
I think it was, was that Surry?
Oh, I thought it was Brooklyn.
There was one, there was one guy that was on it from Surry, he was on Tony Pond.
Oh, it was Tony Pond?
Yeah.
Oh, was it?
He, uh, my understanding is, is there's work going on and they're gonna be all set, he just doesn't know yet.
Oh, good.
That's what it comes down to, yeah, that's what I mean, that's why we've got to dig into these communities, work with, like, in this case, consultants that we're already working with, and say, okay, what's happening, right? Let's get, what's, what's really happening here? And they know, uh, so from there, you know, what we're gonna do is create, starting to define that, kind of that evaluation matrix that we talked about, so, served and unserved, you know, that's gonna be on the basis of our, right? It's not FCC served and unserved, this is opera funding, so we're going off of the opera funding is for that. Simply, you know, doesn't fit the opera, you know, guidelines, because we have to, that's where this money's come from, so that's pretty much required that. Uh, and then it doesn't fit some of the stuff that we'll put in there as consultants, right? Because we know, you know, what's a good broadband project, we know what, you know, the commissioners are trying to solve, we know what broadband's trying to solve, what ours is trying to solve.
John, give me a, an example of a clear, not meeting the criteria for broadband from opera funds, what would that, what could that cost you?
Uh, that they're going to try to serve an area that's already served, that's flat out in our, right, it's.
So if they're adequately served, we wouldn't too.
If they're adequately served, it's, you know, opera put it pretty, pretty general, right? They're trying, they literally say in there, is it adequately served, right? So your interpretation of adequate could come into play, and so we got to look at that as well, but, you know, if you've got a couple of providers going down Main Street. You really don't want to put this money towards that.
I see.
Uh, but this is, there's challenges with service providers where they say they're serving an area, and they very well may be able to reach areas. But they determine oversubscribe, they're so oversubscribed that when you're trying to use the service, you don't get what you paid for. So that's not adequate. That's one of the challenges that we're trying to, you know, broadband communities trying to overcome sometimes. So our evaluation criteria, those are the things that we hit on, right? Let's, let's see where it's, you know, defined as served, unserved, let's see who's in the area already serving, who's, who has the ability to serve, what does their project look like? And what's the funding mechanism, it's like, you know, behind that.
Now, this survey, is that for every community or only those communities that this?
We're pointing it out to all communities, uh, and, you know, truthfully, when I talk to these folks, they're like, hey, we have data, we have maps, we have surveys, you know, so they're gonna feed that to us, so we can think of it, we can just kind of put layers, reach town on a map. And we follow that out with survey results the same way.
I can see it at some point, getting some kind of report that says we've contacted every community, these responded, the rest of them didn't respond.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it says, that's as simple as that.
Right, and then the survey itself, you know, the survey, I'll just ask about broadband capabilities. So that's gonna, in some towns, you know, that are already ready to go, they may not publish it on their website, that's okay, they may already have data, take that data. Yeah, we'll, we'll mix and match with it, we'll have whatever data we can find out there. As part of this, yeah, data gathering processes. That's, that's the evaluation criteria, so that's, we're talking to towns, we'll have a smaller outreach, we'll figure out how to reach those folks. And then, you know, we just start going into the evaluation criteria for each of these towns, which comes to the next one, which is funding, right? So, um, it's, you know, sounds like you guys are, you know, committing funding, we just need to figure out what that looks like, so, two steps to that, right? You need to know, a little bit of a chicken and egg, you need to know what's out there, you know, for projects, and what's, what's it look like? As well as, you know, what's for the towns, you know, how do they request funding? And I'll discuss that again. Is there a process in place necessarily that's been used in the past? But, you know, we just work with them, vet their project, and say, okay, here's what they're looking for, or is there, I know Scott had put that spreadsheet together, is there, you know, kind of a generalized amount, this is, okay, this, you know, this is, kind of goes across the board. We may find some that don't need it, so how does that readjust? But if you guys are ready for, you know, funding conversation, there are certainly projects out there, next, I can probably bring it to you in the next month, that I'm gonna say. Either we're ready, you know, for funding, uh, and again, we vet the process, uh, or where we need you to earmark, I'll say that money, because, you know, we're matching it to come, come do with another grant that we're gonna ask for. When that grant comes, we need that, that's what we're gonna have that funding needed, so.
Now, you did tell us as our consultant that some community, two communities may be at the same point, the likelihood of success for this community is much greater for whatever reason.
Mm-hmm.
And so if we're gonna put our media funds to the best use, we should be selecting this one over this one, then, can you see yourself being that specific?
I can, I can guide a little bit that way, it's, it may not be, uh, specifically this one's better than that one, but here's what this one's gonna serve, and hence how this one's gonna serve. And they may serve two different ways, and one may be, you can almost consider a future proof for thirty years, and the other may be a future proof for ten years, but, you know, you're gonna solve a problem today. So it's balanced with that, it's, you know, it's good money, it's well spent, and there could be others out there that are asking for money, that they're not using it to serve underserved, and so it just doesn't work.
Dylan, for us, deciding where we start spending that money, to me, sounds like, based upon what the criteria is when I develop, is it first come, first served? In other words, the, the community that John tells us is shovel-ready, that given the funds today, they could, they pay a ticket to grant money? Or is it an evaluation of all the communities saying that this one should get this much and that one should get that? In other words, looking at more equity as opposed to first come, first served?
Well. Scott has, you know, done the analysis a couple of different ways here, you know, show us, you know, if every, because I understand if every community participated. He's got a couple formulas, base one, based on population, one based on valuation. So, and, and that looks as if everybody were participating. I think initially, we almost have to go that way, because we, um. There's no rush for this, other than, you know, the projects that are ready, we should be contributing to. But if somebody's not ready, I mean, they, there's time built into this funding mechanism. So I don't think that we should penalize those that aren't ready in favor of those that are ready. But in the end. You know, then realistically, there's gonna be some communities that don't need this. And that will, you know, sort of funnel through or, or readjust the, 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 I don't know what to call it, the, the allocation or whatever you wanna call it. So I think your question is, you know, initially, how do you want to proceed? And I think that this is. A good way to proceed now, well, there's two good ways to proceed, you know, this is two examples, and they're two, and they're very different. You know, do we pick one over the other? Do we, you know, factor, you know, do we sort of mesh them together, but weigh one heavier than the other, or that kind of thing? So, uh. I can't say that I'm prepared to do that today, but I, but what I can say is that I like this idea initially, so that we're fair and we're not penalizing folks that just aren't ready for whatever reason. Maybe they didn't have the resources to be ready, you know, that's probably a very real possibility, so. I'm buying into this, I would like some, you know, some recommendations on, you know, is, is one way more feasible than the other? Or is it, or is it, you know, a combination of the two? Some for us to think about, but.
I don't think it's a first come, first served scenario right now.
I don't either.
Too soon into, but.
Yes.
For a couple of reasons, one, you don't want to burn through cash that you could use better elsewhere, right?
Yeah.
And the other is, which is, we're starting this process, so there are, there are some, I think, if you had equitable, you know, just first round distribution, that said, okay, here's our first brush. Yep, you kind of meet, meet all the criteria, and oh, by the way, you're gonna solve an issue, which is what this is all about, solving a broadband issue, okay? You know, that's money, that, that's early money that can be spent, uh, but keep it in mind that there's, you know, there's more coming, right? There's more projects coming that need to be looked at as well, not saying that in the end, and as we go through this in a couple of months, and say, you know what? Yeah, we undershot, and there's actually gonna be available funding afterwards, you know, you can go back and look at some, but I think going into it right now, some, some equitable line that says, okay, we can start pulling from, we can start drawing from that a little bit, let people know that are ready. Yep, we've got this money earmarked in our, writing a check, so to speak, uh, and others that say, you know, we know, we talked to them, that there's potential. That's good.
And, and, and the other side of this, I understand this analysis, but actually, the converse could be true. Like, the more populated areas may be better served than the unpopulated areas in, in, which is probably the case.
Oh, yeah.
And it's probably more expensive to fix the problems that the underpopulated, and, and so.
Which is why we're, we're.
Yeah, that's why we, something, this analysis is great. Need it to be done, I think we need to chew on it to say, okay, we picked one method over another, or, you know, do we throw something else in?
John, could you explain a little bit, just like, I'll describe this more as, um, a benchmark rather than an allocation?
Yeah.
Could you describe, like, even though we're talking about projects, uh, you and I had this, we had this conversation regarding commitment of funds. This isn't actually like you bring a town in, two weeks later, you get a kind of a check.
Correct.
We're actually probably talking months.
Could be.
Or in some cases.
We're allocating.
Possibly more. Maybe, but months, really, that's, if it goes more than, you know, three, four, five months, it's, it's, maybe it needs a little bit different approach, you know, may, may have to take a step back, but anyways. What I'm trying to spit out here is that, that will also buy you time to reconfigure some things. So if you have a town, you know, that wants a little bit more, you're kind of a little iffy based on your benchmark, it might buy you some time, so that later on, you say, well, this town doesn't even come close to needing a benchmark. But if you look at some of those numbers, I'm actually looking at it and seeing that what's on the table right now is like, I'm kind of curious if we're gonna spend the five point three. Overall, we're going to, because we're going to need several hundred billion dollars, I don't know. I mean, it's, but it's tens of millions of dollars in the future, but that's going to come, have to come from different parts.
That is correct.
But this money, this money will be used to access those parts.
Yes.
So maybe you talk a little, I mean, you already explained it all, but a little reemphasize the, the commitment portion versus actually cutting a check and physically giving them the.
I don't think any of us ever, ever thought we're gonna be asked to cut a check today, I mean.
That's right.
I, I'm sure that's the case, uh.
And this one, one, yeah, but I'll say soon, we'll assume, you know, by the end of the year, right? There's some funded, there's some projects that are probably at, at the point where they can say, you know what, I've got a vendor, we're ready, all they need is money, and.
And that's why I say that even though this may be helpful. Almost feels like we're talking apples and oranges, because if you come to us, say, Devon, they've got a project that could be shovel-ready if we contribute a quarter of a million dollars, well, that portion here is a hundred and sixty. Yeah, so are we going to only give them a hundred and sixty now, they can't be shovel-ready because they didn't get enough funding from us? As opposed to, I mean, we made a community shovel-ready, even though it exceeded, you know, the, the benchmark.
I think part of that is to understand that to solve the broadband problems from a financial standpoint, funding, it's multiple sources of funding, right? There's usually something that's, the town itself, the city is gonna have money invested in it, uh, the vendors, right, this one, we look at too, how much of the vendors will need to put into it? What other grants from Connect Maine have gone to date, what's available in the future? Variety of other grant opportunities, and then you have this, so this is just a P, one piece of the pie, so if it was that, it's like, hey, you know what? The good news is, you're gonna get half of what you need, now you're gonna go find the other half, right? And they can do that, what they can't do is find the whole, and that's, it's, it's pieces, what you're filling in is just pieces of the puzzle.
And if you can come to us with that kind of recommendation, that we can give, Devon, two hundred thousand right now, and need to come up with another hundred thousand.
Right.
They know where to get it if they got seed money plus.
Yeah.
That's the kind of, that's the kind of recommendation from our consultant.
Yeah, no, that's what we're going to look, we're going to bet, that's what we ask these, you know, like, always a good example, Swans Island's a great example, right? They've gotten to this point where they've got that data. They have all the data, I think, that we're going to ask for. That's called undeserved and what's the, what's the financial like? Right? What's the capex, what's the opex? How does all of that look? So that we know it's just not at the best of our ability, not spending commission money, county's money on failed projects. But we're helping move the project along. Some of them, you know, have to solve that with some of these, and these are going to be seed money to get to the next step. Right? It's not going to be for construction. It's going to be for the evaluation and the engineering and to get to that next step.
So gentlemen, we should, we're comfortable telling John that if by the end of the year, you see a project that needs to be funded and bring it to us with your recommendation, it will certainly consider it as part of a funding, right?
Well, I think, you know, the more I'm listening, I, one of the reasons for this exercise was to address exactly what John's talking about. And now I see the importance of the exercise, which I wasn't seeing. I thought we had a little more time. I didn't realize that there were some projects that are that ready. That's great. So I do think that we, you know, maybe not today, but need to think about this approach and say, you know, maybe we need to say, hey, you know, initially, we're going to follow this approach. You know, because we do want to be fair. But we do realize that in the end, it, it, we're, not everybody's going to be able to take advantage of this and we, there probably will be.
Sometimes we're going to need more or less than what we come up as a.
Sure.
Basis. And that's just as a benchmark and that's fine. So that's going to be.
Yeah. So, so I, I, I guess I do see you're nicely, you know, pushing us to, to say, okay, you know, what do I use for a benchmark? I think is what you're doing.
Yep, that we need to, we need to, you know, help these towns along, but at the same time, they need, they need to, you know, show us that this is a legitimate project and what are they going to solve?
Yeah.
But to try to solve.
All I see is that maybe I'm just managing problems, but in other words, we use this for benchmark. You see a community and whatnot, it could be shovel-ready by the end of the year. But they indeed mostly exceeds the benchmark. And so you don't bring that recommendation to us. When perhaps they should have been recommended, even though it's considerably more because of the progress they've made and the, and the result that we could get.
But, so. But I think in, in a few months or a few months, months and a half, here, because of our meeting schedule, there's really only been months and a half here, not two months. You're going to be able to say, okay, town B is not going to need anything. And maybe we can start to address some of those, and maybe you won't, but put words in your mouth here that may not be fair.
I think, you know, certainly as we, you know, just in the first two weeks, right? First, we can start talking to these, you know, actually live people. You know, there's some projects that pretty well along.
Yeah.
There are certain, certain positions that say, okay, you know, they're not going to get, the money's not going to solve it, you know, the county, you know, I don't know. 30 or 50 million dollar problem, right? Because now you look at it, what are you trying to solve? How you, how you want to solve, I should say. But there are enough communities that progressed that they've got other funding set up. They've got operational models set up. They understand how this is going to work. It's not always bought with, you know, straight grant, you know, capex money, they go to loans, right? They're going to take revenue bonds out. And the network's going to pay for itself. That's, that's how it feels, just like it's a private network, that's how it works. Right? You invest and then you take a risk that you're going to get a 30% take rate and, you know, that 50 bucks a month is going to be paid for operations. And pay for the loan that I can go.
Gentlemen, let's let John do a survey. At some point, you will have a sense each community's need.
Yeah.
And we can weigh that against the, the matrix that's spent paying. See, I would.
Yeah, yeah, because you know what? Realistically, I think a month from now. You'll be able to say, okay, this community A is not going to need $500,000. They're, you know, so.
Right. And then so I'd always go back to, right, when you say that, they're going to need it depending on what it is. But it's not coming from here because it doesn't meet the criteria. That's the difference.
Yeah.
Right? That, that's, that's where the difference lies. It's got to meet the criteria.
Is it the criteria, Scott, that you think might keep us from spending all, all the budget?
The criteria and also the, um, the opportunity of using some of this seed money to access the bigger pot. That we won't have to use all of it. In other words, if we can get it from somewhere else, why, why use our resources? That could be, that could be a chance where, you know, we have more shovel-ready projects for this shift and we, but there's so much, there's options there. You know, as I like to describe when I, I bring things to the commissioner, this is very flexible, nothing extra in stone. Um, and I think it gives a good guideline for the consultants to be successful in what they do.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and I, I agree, maybe another month. If John agrees, then, yeah, we may have a better picture.
But I, I do buy into some form of being fair.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's important for you to notice. And, and I haven't decided which way it is, I.
Yeah. And in the end, I think you have to, and especially when it comes to reporting, but also to substantiate the art considerations. Because that is emphasized over and over. And I think we talked about communities that haven't even started yet. Well, I kind of feel that those are the communities that mostly underserved.
Yeah, and they're the ones that need it the most.
And that's what this intent really was, is to help them the most, so. But that should be smaller dollars to get that started. And when we take those smaller dollars, they, those are the seeds that we plant to grow into the bigger pots.
Yeah.
And I.
Exactly. Yeah. We get it to Franklin and who knows, maybe there's a conversation where, um, working together.
And we haven't, you know, what we haven't done, we're going to set those up too, because we haven't spoken to the providers yet, they're, yeah. Right? That's the other thing. It's like, what are their plans? If they'll tell us. Right? But, you know, there's certain sets of providers in certain areas that can serve and may already have some ideas in place. And may already be taking action on those. And then it's, okay, it's very, it's, it's less money, if you will, less funding that's needed. But, you know, helps that town show to that vendor, okay, because the vendor's taking a risk. Sometimes not much of a risk as much as you think, but, you know, they're, they're taking a risk. It's a business, it's a business opportunity. They're not doing it.
So do you think you get the direction you needed?
Yeah, so you're, you're committed, you're committed to spending, you know, some, some form of money on broadband. I'm going to, you know, Mr. Broadman's going to do this vetting process and give you more information to say, okay, here's in the next month, the outline of what we're talking to. Here's all the communities we're spoken to. Here's where each one's at. Um, and here's who needs, you know, some money either now and or allocated at least knowing that they're going to, when they match, you know, their other big money that's coming into the problem, solve the project. That they know that they, okay, that 10,000 for you guys is there. It's not going to get spent. It's going to be there in the next four, four months from now. Yeah.
Rebecca, just as if you need more work, I wonder if you can develop a three green binder for us for AP. The broadband funding, whatnot, so that we can keep these items together. I've already lost my 155 page, or how good it was anyway. Maybe I'll use it to step, it's fine. Yeah. Give me that, give me those 12 pages that really apply.
Just starting my own.
Um, and I don't want to take up much more of your time. The other thing I, I do have now, just as a note, up to you guys, I throw it out there. If you want to have a session, an education session on broadband, anytime, let me know. You know, you can now be anywhere, whiteboard, kind of play you how broadband works and how networks work and where the real money, you know, is spent, what it takes to report a project together. I'm more than happy to.
Not knowing what that is, it seems to me that if we had that in conjunction with the results of your survey and tell us based upon this, this is where they found. I, I could see that being very helpful.
Yeah. If you guys want to have a, I call it a whiteboard session sometime, maybe just give you an education on.
We, we like to schedule things on the off meeting, so it's the middle of the month meeting, that, that is usually less busy than the first of the month. But we want you as often as you can make it every meeting, so we can finish a meeting.
Questions?
No, thank you.
It's moving.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Getting back to the agenda, Chama. So.
Airplane.
Kitty, we all set? All set for the day?
Yep, unless I need to hear this.
Uh, what do you need to hear?
Well, the mics.
Oh, oh, where is Mike?
There, the maintenance.
Oh, maintenance?
Yeah, well, we're going to go, we're picking up speed here, I can feel it.
Uh, we're still. You want to just move along?
Yeah, I say let's move along.
Okay.
We're picking up speed.
Yeah. Good morning, Leroy.
Morning.
We have you, we have your report.
That, that's all I got. The update on the fire truck is George called yesterday and said it's ready, so we're going to go get it today.
Okay, so I'm going to move to accept and file airport manager's report is presented.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing the hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Leroy.
Chair, there, there is one action item.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, okay.
That's nice.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I'm going to move to pay Todd Daly, uh, a dollar per hour stipend in addition to his current pay for the added work. Load of keeping the RF operational as recommended by the airport manager and county administrator.
Seconded. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Is there anything else from the airport?
I have nothing. And thank, Todd, thanks you for that.
Was the truck as bad as it originally thought or?
Uh, I haven't seen the bill, so.
All right.
Well, we'll know that shortly.
Okay, Leroy, thank you.
Thank you.
No one? Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
We have this report. I'm going to move to accept and file the UT director's report is presented.
Seconded. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Your off, off, on premises liquor license, Miller.
Yes, this is, this is an annual renewal for the airline snack bar in downtown 22.
I'm going to move to approve the on-premises liquor license for airline snack bar as requested and recommended.
Seconded. Do we have to, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to vote in favor, motion carries. Do we have to, to, uh, sign this, Miller, or just? Do we sign this?
And we're just weighing in on the state.
I, I don't believe you do. I think we just submit the minutes where you, uh, signed it.
Okay.
The way you approved it and then.
Okay, very good. So it doesn't require a commissioner's approval? Okay, so the motion carries.
I didn't, I didn't really get the official.
I think you talked about that.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think both are called. You did, but yeah.
Aye.
Yeah, just thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was.
No, you were headed there and then, yeah.
Well, I hesitated because I didn't know if we needed to amend it to have the, you know, the chair sign. So, okay. I guess now we have three votes, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, your scholarship application, Miller. We have that in front of us. The, this is a new applicant as opposed to the ones we've gotten in the past years.
Yes.
The one we had in the past, which was the only one that qualified, did she graduate or?
No, I don't think so. Something happened during COVID and, uh, I don't think she finished this a semester. It got shut down or something.
Okay, so.
The, the last, the last time you approved one, nothing was spent, expended.
Okay.
For whatever reason.
Okay, so we, there's no reason to expect that she would, she would have applied and missed it or, oh, this is the only case that you got, right?
Right, yes.
So I guess my question is, you know, what are we, you know, what action are you asking us?
In the, in the past, well, let me saddle, in each TIF, we have $500,000 available for education. So that's a million dollars available over 30 years. In the past, the commissioners have approved up to 2,500 to be expended for, uh, uh, for an applicant. And it's nev, it's never been over 20,000. That they actually, the invoices, because we don't give the money to the applicant, we give it to the, the school. They invoice us and we pay the school. We talked about possibly doing some kind of an endowment with some of this money so it would continue. Then the question is what happens to TIF money at the end of the TIF, life of the TIF? In some years, we may have multiple applications. Some years, we don't have any. But we have stuck with the 25,000 up to now. And I don't see any reason to go any higher.
So at this point, I think we're just accepting the application. And, and then, you know, at some point in the future, when, when this person gets everything laid out and we know what the amount is, then we'll take action on the amount.
Well, in, in the past, what you have done is approved the application for an amount for up to 25,000. That authorized me to pay it. And then when the school invoiced me, I just paid the invoice when it came in.
And that's what I want to do this time, Paul.
Well, the reason I'm asking this question is, you know, there's, there's other sources of potential funding here that we don't know whether they're going to come to fruition. Right? Is that a correct assumption is, is my question?
We mean for this, this student?
For this student.
Why do we care?
Because if there are, then that would, we'd be spending less. If they qualify for.
I think that, I think in the past, that's why they've always said up to 2,500. Because whatever else they got for tuition was applied first and then we picked up whatever was left over.
Miller, you keep saying 2,500. You mean 25,000.
25,000, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, okay. And so you have always considered other funding before we spent our TIF scholarship money, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, so the suggestion is to accept the application and award up to $25,000
Correct.
Per year. Is that, is that, I'm fishing for a motion here is what I'm.
Well, that is the motion. Motion is to.
Okay. So I'm going to, uh, I'm going to move to accept the Hancock County Unorganized Territories Scholarship Application from William Wilson. An award up to $25,000 per year and wish him the best of luck.
Seconded.
Is that?
Uh, that, no, we, we have to award this each year, correct, Miller?
Yes.
You, the motion should stipulate for a year, no?
Okay, uh, for the school year 2022, is that what this is?
Yeah, September 21 to June 22, yes.
Okay. September 21 is already passed. Is he in school now?
I believe so.
No, but he's not in college now. He's in high school, right? The application sounds like it's, because this is about the time of year you get ready for FASSA, so.
Yeah, that's what, that's.
So I think the school.
The way I'm reading this is he was employed by the city of Ellsworth over the summer as deputy havemanister. The way, the way I'm reading this is he was employed by the city of Ellsworth over the summer as deputy habermanist, and he got done in August because he left for college. Meaning he's in college right now.
Yeah, well, maybe you just need some clarity on that, but.
Uh, second, front page, second paragraph down. So where I was reading.
Well, maybe if you could get some clarification on what school year this, this application is for, if it's not in there. What we call.
So, I think that my motion should be to accept this application. Period, and then we need to, we need some clarity on what we're doing.
Right, each, to get it for the next year, Miller, you'd have to apply again, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so your motion should be for the application. Then we need some clarity, I, I would agree with that.
This is saying. This man was the supervisor at City Highway. I'm just hoping to get home and ask him if we would have to delay this.
Oh.
Well, I can't reach him.
Yeah, I think you continue, Ken, Chip. Just based on, just based on the application, that the application is for retro year or the next year?
We'll take it up to the next meeting, it'll be, I mean, it's two weeks away, but I do think that we need to accept this application. So my motion is to accept that this application and wish him best of luck, and then at subsequent meeting, when we have more clarity on exactly what this is for, then we'll award him the correct amount, whether it's for this year or next year.
No, my problem is that if this was for next year, then maybe applicants who would apply for next year that we don't have. I think.
I, I believe it's for this year. But I can double check and confirm that. If you want to ta, if you want to postpone this until your next meeting, I don't think two weeks is gonna make any difference whether.
I agree, and, and, and I'm just going from my experience, when I applied for a scholarship, I, I applied, you know, for, for the future, not retroactively, so that's why I'm not sure, I, I don't know what this is.
I, I think it's retroactive because they weren't aware of it. They just emailed me a week or so ago, asking about the scholarship, and I sent them the application.
Yeah, so to, to be honest, there's just enough, there's just enough ambiguity, ambiguity that we need to.
I, I don't, I don't want to accept the application as accepted in the sense that we're going to fund it. I think that we take that all up in one action, that we accept the application that we're going to fund it. Because if it's next year, I don't, uh.
We still need to accept it. Even if, even if it is next year and won't come up, we, we haven't allocated any money to it.
I don't think you need to accept it. Now, the way.
I don't think you need to take any action, just postpone it until your next meeting.
Okay, let's do that, let's do that.
I'm gonna move favorless item for the next, uh, meeting.
Motion made to table, you think this is true? I don't either, the motion fails for a second, we're gonna move on.
Okay.
Uh, Miller, anything else for UT?
I talked to Steve Jordan this morning. So far, I haven't got a signed agreement for the snow plowing with the town of Alpham, but he was expecting to get the second signature tonight at a meeting and would, uh, finalize. It's, it's getting late. The other thing is, I talked to a representative of Weevil Wind last week, so the, uh, the connector trail to connect Fletcher's Landing to the Sunrise Trail is still on the table, we're working on it, no action yet, but.
Good, okay. Anything else, Miller? That's all I've got. Very good, moving on. The sheriff has a request for. Morning, Ben. Oh, morning, morning, Sheriff.
Yeah, Ben was gonna take care of this because I didn't know if I'd be in here in time, but uh, it's just a request for Deputy Moran for out of state travel to New Hampshire uh, for two weeks of their training, he's a mentor. Uh, they covered the expenses, et cetera, so, um, just asking for that. Uh, he'll be leaving on the 7th of, of, uh, this month.
And you say that New Hampshire?
Correct. He went last year.
Yeah, thankfully he doesn't have to follow, he can grow, so.
Yeah, right.
I'm gonna move to approve out of state travel for Deputy Rob Moran uh, to attend their training as requested and recommended.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Gonna handle the jail. We have a request here to remove, but it is to be moved to, what, former employees.
So I'm gonna move to remove Dallas Lotford Sierra or from the county payroll.
Seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Scott, anything else from the sheriff's office this morning?
No, we're, we're all set, thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on, good morning, Dennis. We have your report. I'm gonna move to accept and file the solar director's report as presented. Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So we've got an update this morning from Mike.
Uh, yes, uh, Mike's here, and he's been, uh, all throughout the building measuring, poking, brooding. He's got, uh, some valuable information for us, while I yield to him, but your permission.
Sorry, Mike, I thought we were gonna be fast.
Thank you for your effort. Yeah, thank you for having me. Um, I'm not going to present solutions today, but I want to inform you about what I've been thinking about, and like, as I have been throughout the facility, and I have just some comments to make regarding accessibility in general. As you know, this is an interesting building. Well, I should say, that's an interesting. Yeah.
You say that.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so I, I, I know some visual aids, just to help along.
Why don't you go to the other, I'm going to see.
You see her, or?
I'm not sure, yeah, that's fine, right there, Mike, yeah, I just want to get this recorded.
So, um, as you know, a couple years ago when we worked on the RCC, we kind of concentrated on, you know, looking at, at this portion of the building, but I did want to understand the entire building in terms of, um, what we call life safety, which is essentially exiting, which is how safe the building is, uh, as well as accessibility. And, uh, the good news is, uh, while the original building was a little short on what we call typical modern life safety strategies, in other words, stairs in the right place, um, the, the addition, I think in 1995, of the stair on the backside of the building, in conjunction with this, the existing stairs for the sheriff's stand, gives a really clean, kind of like, there's always two ways out of the building, so you're usually in pretty good shape, so I'm no longer concerned that if we are doing a project that we're somehow going to be in a situation where there's a life safety issue, then it's gonna balloon. Um, on the accessibility side, which is, you know, what we're trying to address with the entrance to the sheriff's office, the entire building is sort of sprinkled with accessibility issues. And the biggest one is really, uh, restrooms. The, when the building was built, a lot of people had their own restrooms, and still do, there are little bathrooms, like everywhere. And when I say there are little bathrooms, what I mean is there are very little bathrooms. Uh, I mean, it's great if you're, you know, an able-bodied person and got your office and you've got your bathroom. But in terms of the general public, for instance, um, the opportunities for accessible bathrooms are, are not what they could be. And in general, when we look at accessibility as designers, our focus is on two parts, the, of people who work in the building, and then the general public. So having said that, there are also, for instance, there are a number of doors in the building which are not wide enough to get a wheelchair. There aren't a lot, but there are, I would say, maybe a dozen or so. Um, so there's those types of accessibility issues that are throughout the facility. And whether you want to do something about them or not, you know, that's, that, that could be a discussion for another day. Um, but for instance, the commissioner's podium itself is not accessible. It's just an example of, well, you know, if a commissioner, for instance, uh, either temporarily or in your permanent fashion could not traverse, you know, up onto the podium, you have an accessibility issue, and that's why people end up putting ramps up on podiums and things like that. So, um, I'm saying all this because when I, what I want to do is I want to be able to look at the building holistically and say, if you have money for accessibility uh, improvements, then which improvements to the building are going to get you the most bang for your buck? Now, certainly, the, uh, if you park down at the, you know, sheriff's area, and you're trying to get to the sheriff's office, there is no accessible room, you have, you know, as we know, it's just that, that one staircase. Um, but the truth of the matter is, if you are, if you come in, you know, from this ramp, and you want to go to the sheriff's office, you go to this elevator, down the elevator to, to, to this floor, that route is actually not that far compared to, for instance, if you come in this way and you have to get to the court, or that's an even further distance. So I'm not saying that it wouldn't be beneficial to, uh, provide accessibility to the sheriff's office by means of, you know, either a, a ramp or an elevator. But I'm just saying, in the grand scheme of things, there are other accessibility issues which, in my mind, as a designer, sort of come to the forefront. Now, having said that, um, you know, I, you, you know, one of the things we're trying to do is determine, so what, what is the project? And, you know, what, what is our budget capacity to, to do a project? And, uh, one option would be to provide accessibility to the sheriff's office in a relatively low budget manner. And then if you have excess capacity, address some of the other accessibility issues that are present throughout the building, so that you're kind of providing the best level of accessibility improvements that you can for the most people. Having said that, uh, I have been looking at an elevator solution for the sheriff's office. And my recommendation is to not think about replacing the elevator which is there or somehow modifying it, I think that's an incredibly expensive product, I, I just don't see the return. But a, a two-stop elevator that goes from the, basically the parking lot, and probably, probably on this plat, somewhere in this, um, reused outside area would be a good place. A two-stop elevator that gets you from the parking lot level up to the sheriff's office level, and then just, you, you go into the building. That's pretty clean, you know, it's, it's, we're not trying to make that one, that new elevator go to other floors, because those other floors are already served by an elevator. Now, having said that, I also think that, and, and we've, we've, uh, gotten a, a survey of that, with the geography around the sheriff's office, which is gonna actually take place next week, but just from my own measurements, it appears that it is possible to develop a ramp on this side of the building that would actually, you go about from this, like, right about this point, you, you could do a switchback ramp to get you up to the, um, sheriff's office level. And that's just a, it's a not, it's not a building project, it's a landscaping project. There's no mechanical parts, we're not making new space, but we are providing requisite accessibility. And that would be a relatively inexpensive project. Uh, that solution actually is attractive to me because if we can solve an accessibility problem without actually building more space, I mean, I think we're, you know, we've done a good job. Uh, and if that sort of project is of a, of a size that frees up money for other accessibility improvements, then I think, you know, like I said before, you, you're able to solve of, of maybe a couple of accessibility issues that provide benefit to a, a lot of people, not just the people who are going to the sheriff's office, but people who are in the building for other purposes.
Would that ramp be covered? To envision that being covered?
So I don't know what the criteria is for your, the funding that you have, and I would seek your guidance to understand that. Uh, I think if it's a ramp that's solving an accessibility issue, I mean, that's, that seems just as valid a project as an, as an elevator.
But I'm just curious, if that ramp would be covered, or would that be open to the elevator?
Oh, covered. I thought you meant in terms of, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's two, two definitions of the word cover.
Right, I understand.
Maybe more. Yeah. Um, it could very well be uncovered now, certainly, yeah.
Wouldn't you, obviously, through that, wouldn't you, Dennis, if you're gonna have a ramp, something would have to require.
So, when, when maintenance? And I think we should put some ice and snow heat in the ramp as well.
That's what, yeah.
Yeah, still melt everything. So.
But if it's covered, that would be necessary, correct?
Uh, well, wind-driven, yeah, ice, ice is.
I would, I would say enclosed.
Oh, given enclosed, that's, yeah.
Well, I could enclose, like part of a foyer or atrium or whatever. Yeah. I, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there are different, like, different ideas, but again, I, I think what I'm trying to say is that, you know, having looked at the building and, and, and sort of said, okay, there are accessibility issues with the building, so if we have a certain amount of funds, what is the most judicious way to, to use those funds to, to solve all those positions?
Unlike the broadband project, where we, in our minds, we've set aside a certain amount, we had no idea what we were spending on this project. And, uh, least that, because we really didn't want, you know, blow the bank on this project, the rest of it.
Well, and it's refreshing to hear that we're natural, but, so, more problems is there.
For, you know, without, you know, we could spend a lot of money, you know, with a fancy entrance that does nothing but serve a few people. I like, I like your line of thinking. Yeah, I, I just wanted to point one other thing out. Um, I've sort of blown up the sheriff's office area here, it's, you know, on this, uh, lower level. But there's a lot of what I would call lobby area right now. You know, and, and I'm hesitant to build more lobby area, and there's just so much. Um, also, uh, well, two things, doing like another small addition. This area is just getting busy, and I'm just saying that sort of like from architectural, you know, visual impact kind of statement, and so I don't want it to carry too much weight. But this is a, this is a, has become a very busy area, so if, if we can keep the solution to accessibility here sort of clean, elegant, it's really just landscaping, we're not sort of glomming another thing onto the building. I think it will maintain the attractiveness and just, you know, sort of utility of the building. Related to that is, I understand that the old jail may. Related to that is, I understand that the old jail may not be there in the future.
Well, while we're talking about that, you, you know, on the nights, there is a Zoom meeting scheduled, you see that? Yeah, uh, then they have been Zooming, rest, breeze into that project, we'll have to wait and see, but.
Oh, we don't know.
I can't, I can't imagine what this group is going to do, that the old group was coming to do, but we'll have to see. But anyways, that is going to increase the, the need for accessibility if that building is, is removed and it's a parking lot.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, so any sort of, like, if there is a landscape solution to accessibility to the sheriff's office, and if we know that there may be more land available for, you know, rating or something like that, then it could be that, for instance, right now, um, you got the bottom of the steps up to the sheriff's office, there's, it's basically a seven-foot lift to that, the top, stairs go up seven feet. As you move towards, um, State Street, ground is a little better, so it's possible, for instance, that your ramp is going to only have to be six feet. But one common sort of trick that we employ when looking at accessibility to buildings is if we can raise the ground up, the ramp becomes shorter, because we don't have to go as vertically as far.
Even, even, even six feet is seventy-five feet of ramp, right?
It is, but it's, it's, it's basically, you know, you're going, let's say, thirty-five feet one way, thirty-five feet the next way, that's, it's really not that far. And I, I would have, I guess I would say that, you know, thinking about accessibility and whether an elevator makes more sense than the ramp. And I, I don't have, I don't, I haven't concluded which way is better. Uh, but one thing is to say, so, you know, who are the people who are using it, you know, how frequently is it being used? Is it something where that necessitates sort of, you know, making more enclosed space, both on the the parking lot level? You, you, you have to step into like a lobby before you step into the elevator, so it'd actually be built much more than just the elevator. Um, you know, if that really is the, be right thing to do, then let's pursue that. Uh, but backing up, um, one of the important things to realize is that the accessible path from to a building starts with where the parking space is. So we have to identify it as a, a parking space which is, you know, becomes an accessible parking space. And then from there, how does a person get out of the car into the wheelchair and then either to the elevator or to the ramp? Uh, and it's tight down, the, the, you know, the drive aisle is, is fairly narrow. And, and as everybody knows, parking is sort of tight down there too. So if there isn't the building there, I would say, you know, then we can sort of plan this project around either the fact that there's going to be more land that where the parking can be adjusted or there isn't going to be more land, so we just have to, again, we're dealt with now.
Mike, what, what the, what was behind this was the fact that we're going to have to spend a lot of money to repair the steps. You can't use Apple money to repair the steps. But you could incorporate new steps into an accessibility entrance. So that's, that's what started this. Now, if we put a switchback, we're still gonna have to fix our steps. So what's that going to cost and who's gonna pay for that? How do we get that out of Apple, which we can?
But, you know, maybe if it's a landscaping solution, then, you know, maybe that simplifies.
It simplifies the fact that we've, we've gotten our accessibility for the handicap, but it hasn't, it hasn't solved the problem of those steps that are needed.
Actually, I, I think there's a good case to be made that repairing the steps can be seen as an accessibility project. Because you have to remember that people's, um, uh, accessibility issues come in many flavors. There aren't just people who are in wheelchairs, but for instance, there are people who for whom, like a proper can rail to hold on to while they're going up the steps is part of their, you know, mobility needs. Um, yeah, yesterday I was here sort of measuring the front of the building, and there was a guy uh, on the sidewalk. He, he saw me by the front door to the, to the building. And he said, are those doors open? And I thought that was kind of an interesting question, because it was in the middle of the day, of course, the doors were open. He was at the bottom. He asked it because he didn't want to climb up the stairs, find out, find out the door was locked, and then have to climb back down the stairs. Because his mobility was such that he could go up the stairs, but it was difficult. Um, and having said that, for instance, the handrails that go from the sidewalk to the front of the building, those aren't to code. So even replacing those handrails with a more compliant design, I believe, would be, be qualified for, you know, sort of as a, as an accessibility improvement.
Kenny, does that sound like it's beating the test?
Well, I think we're talking about a whole different situation than what we originally were, which was at first muster was denied, right? They said, we don't need this asset, so I think as we scope this out, we can sort of fine-tune it and we have something else to go back to.
Have you put a price on fixing the steps, Mike, give me a hand, backhand, that would cost?
Well, Commissioner, we looked at it a couple ways. I think, you know, if we were just replacing the steps itself, um, sort of in kind, but more compliant and more durable. Uh, you know, instead of perfecting from a thousand-dollar project. If we start looking at like a covering or enclosure, then we're doubling that.
At least. I, I, I like your strength thought. I, I, I think this makes a lot of sense, I think, Kenny. You know, and, and starting to see how we can make this fit in, if we can make it fit in. But, uh, especially when there are a lot of unknowns here with that building and, you know, it's got, there's a lot of unknowns.
I'm, I, I don't think you're suggesting that we spend Apple money repairing individual bathrooms, those little tiny single bathrooms?
No, I would, I would look at it. Well, it, it's sort of basic question, like, if you're an employee here and you have your own bathroom, obviously you're in good shape, but if you're an employee here and you don't have your own bathroom, then are you going to other people's offices to use their bathroom? Probably not, right? So you still need a publicly available bathroom to use. And so I would focus on those publicly available bathrooms. Well, for instance, so the ones on the main level, there's actually a sign that says, if you need an accessible bathroom, go to the other floor.
Is that the door that's?
Uh, the, the stall, you know, the stall is, um, adequately sized. I mean, on, on top of that, I think, you know, sort of doing a bathroom refresh is probably a really good idea anyway. But, but it certainly can't be an accessibility project. There might be a number of ways to, to look at that. Yeah, I'm sort of, I'm looking at the building, saying, okay, is this door accessible? If it's not, you know, maybe, maybe there's, you know, part of what you're doing is just replacing some undersized doors with adequately sized doors, those, those are accessibility improvements. You know, bathrooms, you're fixing the bathrooms, you have accessible stalls, and then, um, related to that, like, for instance, we're doing a lot of projects right now, which I'm not sure whether it's Apple money or not, but they're, they're ventilation projects. You have poorly validated school buildings, for instance. There's very little way of ventilation. So, you know, for instance, so like a, a bathroom project that addressed ventilation as well as accessibility, to me, that's, that's something that's going to benefit a lot of people.
I suspect that was, I do qualify for Apple, because you got jails, such as.
Yeah, yeah, so the ventilation, and, and, yeah, you're exactly right. So if I could, Jim, because I, I kind of, I'm seeing a lot of mention of accessibility, and for me, that doesn't really fall under ARP. And what I do see is some great ideas that are alternatives. With regards to ARP and being a use ARP funding for this, it's more about mitigation, prevention. Um, the idea, thought process of allowing accessibility through another route, which currently, uh, a handicapped individual or a disability does not have. So for us, and the commissioners, we guys are spending ARP monies with this project, that's kind of the scope and not necessarily accessibility. But I think we really appreciate this, the thought process we able to take. This project may be saved with some funds, and if there are other ideas that we address, such as the front steps or bathrooms, we can look at that at a different project. And I also, I feel that if, depending on how this construction went, that I think that those steps down there would fall, would fall into this category. If the, if the ramp was approved, then I don't see why the steps wouldn't. Again, I think you made a great point with the, um, the accessibility, but from a mitigation, prevention standpoint versus, um, you know, ADA.
Yeah.
So that's kind of what we're talking, the difference between COVID and ADA here is what, but you're, I think you're on the right track. I think, yeah, be interesting to see a little bit more of some of these ideas.
Yeah. Didn't you have a concept drawing of this, this back rain? No, like I, I'd say, I'm not, I didn't compare to. But, um, I did just sort of, you know, sketch, okay, so, you know, how, how, how big would that ramp be? And it, it just didn't seem, you know, based on what I know now, and like I said, we're gonna get better topographic information in about a week or two. Um, it didn't seem that big of a thing to do, to.
So, one more question, so, how far are we gonna head, head down, if we understand what's gonna happen next door? Because obviously, we have some time to use the box. We know that's gonna be good, something's gonna get decided during the next six months for sure, they will have an idea. That's what I'm concerned about. This new group comes, it appears to have recently life of that project, came ago for another five years of failures in finding the funds they need to get that.
Well, that's our decision to make.
No, that was, the decision, they're, they're doing this. They're doing this, they're gonna, they're withdrawing their offer, not withdrawing, hesitating on their offer to give us deed back based upon this new license being breached by, by this federal organization or something. Are you familiar with them? I don't know what that is. It's a federal historical preservation group, so anyways. Here we go again. I mean, I can see, I can see, I can see a long time being devoted to realizing. It's, it's, well, I mean, I would still think we have, it's something I don't know whether it's, whether it's gonna be a drawn-out affair, or it's not gonna be a drawn-out affair, so hopefully that, that can inform at least where we start building the project. Well, the need based upon the increase in parking spots, now, does that change your design, Mike?
No, what I'm saying is that if, for instance, we were able to contemplate doing some grading changes, that makes doing a ramp easier, then we would build a shorter ramp, and, and that would be even less money, you know, um. So.
Well, so even you said it, you must in the back of your mind have an idea with those grade changes taking place. Are you talking about removing the wall?
Uh, yeah, I would say that that retaining wall gets modified. A, a ramp would occur in that grassy area.
Between the wooden steps and the main office entrance.
Well, let's see, I mean, so the, the retaining wall, which is here and continues all the way down, the, that, I would contemplate that ramp being somewhere, you know.
That bump up right there is the, is the entrance.
Yeah, this is the bottom of the stairs right here.
Go up on the main building, Mike, one, oh, where the.
Oh, right here, yeah, yeah, that, that's the, I, I think it's called the employee.
Employee, yes, yeah. But it would hap- happen somewhere between those two.
Right.
Um, it makes sense.
Well, let's see, if we were going to try to come up in this area somewhere, and you may recall, um, Bill, we talked about trying to come in here, and I said, well, there's a column right there. I actually think we can do something, construction is not that expensive.
Move there?
To, yeah.
Because we thought there were drains and some other stuff from.
Well, but one, one idea would be to have a ramp in this grassy area here, and we would end, that ramp would end up coming out to about this far. So this is about forty feet per year, this distance right here. So that's, that's the sort of area that I'm thinking about.
Obviously, you'd have to enter it from the west side, towards station and switchback.
And switchback, and, and so that, that begs the question, where is that handicap parking space itself? Because it should be as close to the foot of the ramp as possible.
Just like the sheriff has lost his spot.
I was gonna say, between the construction, the redesign and, and your handicap, um, spot, there, there's gonna be some loss of parking, uh, uh, of current parking available, but there's also the possibility that it could extend down a little further if there's a redesign down there. One or two spots, they, they actually parked there unofficially down towards the garage. Um, and then if there's an opportunity, you know, with the old jail, that certainly takes care of the larger picture, but.
Yeah, we can see where it's going.
Yeah. Well, Commissioner, as you remember, when we designed the RCC, you know, we sort of went into it thinking, well, let's build an addition up here. And then subsequently realized that there was a, probably, you know, it was a better idea, which was what we ended up doing. And so one of the things I want to make sure that we're doing here is that just because it seems like an elevator is the way to solve an accessibility issue, if in fact there's a different, what, a different solution that we can come up with, let's figure that out first, so you know, sort of go down a path and then sort of have the better way out.
Well, and, you know, an elevator, there's ongoing expenses, there's, I mean, there's all, to me, if there are more elegant, cheaper ways of doing it to help us get somewhere later, makes much more sense.
But the thing is, is that the elevator became an idea because we could, we could eliminate the steps, move the steps over as part of the elevator project, get it all paid for by Apple. Because the truth of the matter is, I'll bet we wouldn't use that switchback ramp twenty times a year. I, I, you know what I mean?
Well, you'd be talking about employees using it too, because the stairs would be gone, right?
No, no, I don't keep stairs.
Yeah, well, that, that's the other thing. I mean, a lot of accessibility features benefit everybody, whether they're mandatory or not. And, for instance, think about people who are making deliveries, they have a dollar. So either a hand truck or an elevator is a great thing for just deliveries, you know, so.
That's, that's a good point, because that, that would increase the use of it.
Well, that's why I said, well, I would bring it over and eliminate those stairs and.
Because why, why would you make, why would you make an employee walk seventy-five feet when they could walk up, up seven foot stairs?
Well, I got one, yeah, well, I, I don't want that would tell me it would be easier to walk the ramp than the stairs, but you're also talking deliveries, I've seen it many times. Although these are no steps.
I'm just saying, eliminate and make everybody use the ramp, right? As the sole option, then, right, the sheriff's about, it's a reason.
No, so when you get up there, is so, is there a way to build the ramp, and so we're closer, maybe there's fewer steps that take you into the employee entrance?
Yeah, we're.
But, yeah.
Okay. Jesus, I think they might need some direction here.
Yeah.
He really, at some point, he's gonna stop, he's gonna stop this still, this global search and, and focus on some kind of project that's similar, right?
Yeah, but again, I think what I, what I want to make sure is that I'm going to be designing the right project. And so taking time to think about, okay, well, how is the building going to get you, who's using it? Um.
The worthwhile exercise.
But.
Makes a lot of sense.
So, yeah, this a, a little bit of investment in just sort of like looking at the big picture, I think is gonna pay off in terms of we should finally decide what to do, have the confidence that it's the right thing, just.
I think though, if we're doing two, absolutely, my personal opinion, if we're gonna use Apple funds for just to, we'll say, unaccessible bathrooms without the water.
Yep.
That's something we might want to do, something as they're on the road, and we still have access to our funds, knowing how much money we're gonna do. Kind, might, might be a good way to finish off the.
But, but I don't think Mike is saying, I expect, you know, what you've come up for in a concept could be staged, right?
Yeah, I mean, um, Yeah, I mean, um. If you have a certain amount of money, and we're only spending a portion of that on the. Sheriff's Office accessibility project, that's fine, because if, if you, you have two or three or four years to spend money, then in two or three or four years, you know, tackle these other things. We can certainly do sort of like a surgical strike with this one accessibility issue, but. We've done that, knowing that there's sort of like a master plan to take care of other things that would benefit other people.
Today, though, it seems, looking at Dennis from the state, it seems like today our priority is fixing those steps.
Yeah, well.
And we're not going to fix those if we had a scheme, you know, an idea that moved them to another place. Obviously, we don't waste money fixing those steps and then not using them later, so. Dennis, what do you think? Where should, should? Trying to give Mike some direction here, where do you think we should be going?
Well, it seems to me we've, we've got two concepts. One is we build a ramp and rebuild the stair set. And then the idea emerges that maybe we replace the stair set with the ramp and.
I can tell you, I, I.
I don't know what happens with that side of the building if we do that, but, or we have the one lift elevator and we re- rebuild the stairs where they are.
So I'm sensing a little confusion. The stairs that I was talking about, the ramp would, we would still have the stairs to the sheriff's office.
The ones that need to be repaired?
The ones that need to be repaired. The stairs I'm talking about were the employee entrance stairs that are steep. Are tho- you're replacing those with this ramp? Is that, those are eliminated, but?
This, the, the, the ramp doesn't go that far.
It doesn't, okay.
Yeah.
Those are the stairs. No, no, I'm not talking about replacing the S, I, I apologize for that, so, yeah.
No, no, I'm just understood you. Okay. All right, so we're on the same page. So. And you know, Mike is right though, why are we spending? That kind of money for elevators, one floor, if we could do it with a switchback ramp? That.
Plus the ongoing maintenance, all the issues that come along with the elevator.
Can I, can I ask one more question? So what if you did, let's just say you had a little more room and you eliminated those stairs. So say you entered in, you went up the ramp on the beginning of the switchback towards State Street. What if that next ramp didn't go all the way over to the sheriff's department, but came up onto a level kind of halfway where? If you wanted to, needed to go that, so you went that way, but if I had my employees, they go this way?
The, the second half, in other words, that, that first half of the ramp goes up.
Yeah.
Continues to a platform in front of the employee store.
Right, right.
Do away with the, uh, stairs.
Yeah, because those stairs are awful.
We go to that.
Years ago, we had some beautiful grand stairs. They, they needed to be replaced, it's true, they were built so stupid.
Well, if we take out the jail, we can have some new granite.
You're right, do what?
I, I already said a lot of that, I said, well, if we take down the new jail, we might have some new granite, but in any event, um.
I'd like to have Mike focus on. I'd like to have Mike, Mike focus on the switchback ramp cupboard. But to some extent, but do you think Dennis, that we put heat in the flooring that we could have it open? And then, uh, the cost and, and what it would cost to repair the existing stairs? I mean, interest the.
Yeah. Yeah, one thing about cupboard, it also makes it wind tunnel and cold too, so. You know, there's, there's, I, I guess I would be looking for a design advice on, on, I hate to give you such.
Yeah.
Such a high concrete direction that we're taking designer.
Um, no, that's okay. I, I, I think, uh. An open, I would favor an open ramp with some snowmelt built into the. The walking surface.
No covering it all over?
No, because, I mean, to keep snow out, like Dennis is saying, you're always going to get drifting snow, so you end up basically creating a tunnel.
And then closing it totally is another question.
Well, it's not other question, but, um. They're either very, very cold, or when the sun's out, they're very, very hot. And so it's a, it's a, it's an uncomfortable tunnel to be in. Uh. The snowmelt, the only question I would have about that. Is Bill's power capacity. Snowmelt is a lot, I'm not sure.
As nor.
Okay.
No concern.
Okay.
We have upgraded switchgear down there.
Yeah.
Pretty robust.
Yeah, I mean, that's a pretty, that's a pretty elegant solution.
Uh. But it wouldn't necessitate removing the wall. There is a space where the wall comes around before you get to the elevator chair. Is that wide enough for the base of the ramp?
Yeah, it, it may very well be, um, once I get the topographic information, I can start, you know, sketching it or this, and so be easy to.
It's actually, it's actually the lower landing to the stairwell. And we took it to that lower landing stairwell, be the base of the ramp.
It could be, yeah.
But that is up six or eight inches of the, of the level of the pavement.
Yeah, but that's like what I was saying, um, you know, changing the grade of the pavement is, that's cheap.
Here to build.
Yeah, yeah. When you pick up the grade of foot, it's a lot cheaper than selling a torpedo.
So gentlemen, what if today we give Mike direction on more specifics on the switchback ramp? And the cost of repairing the existing stairs to make them more handicap assessment with the right railings and whatever it takes. Elevation to the parking lot to accommodate both the landing for the stairs and the entrance to the ramp. I was having focus on that.
Is that what you're?
Was that the direction you're looking for, Mike?
Yeah, no, that's, that's the direction, um. Like I said, I, you know, well, when, when we started thinking about this project, I was thinking, well, it might be worthwhile looking at two things, you know, two ideas. I would like to be able to show the ramp, because I think that is a, a really attractive solution, and we'll see, you know, once I get better. Information what that's going to really look like.
You say attractive aesthetically or financially?
Both, both, yeah. Well, again, um. You know. Doing an addition on top of an addition that's already on top of an addition, it's, it just. It's not sitting well with me, and so.
It's, it's going to happen till hell freezes over. What are you going to do with this building?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, listen bridge to hell, you're always going to have to do something.
Yes, but I mean, you know, the elevator's not a bad idea. I just. And, and so it might just be worthwhile just to look at, look at what it's going to look like, and then.
I think, I think you, I think you could have talked us into it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I generally think that, you know, that was, uh, that was pie in the sky perhaps that we, we're now coming to a consensus and.
Well, that's why we got a designer professional.
Yeah, right. Thank you very much for bringing this to us. Um, I think that's, I think that's where we ought to go for the time being. Mike should focus on the switchback ramp. Fixing the stairs, making those more handicap accessible for.
And, and, and I don't want, but in doing that, I don't want to stifle your creative juices and, and. You know, this design either. You know, I don't think we're doing that, are we?
No, no, not at all. Yeah, yeah, this is a. Well, no, well, I'm, I'm trying to have this, because it sounds like I talked about doing an addition project, which is, you know, to me.
Yeah, something else to consider too, is I'm guessing groundwork and concrete work opens you up to many more opportunities and bids and options with you guys to vendors.
First. Well, it's a different, yeah, it's a different kind of, you know, we're, we're not. We're not making new enclosed condition space and, you know, lately, mechanical. Portion of projects has been thirty-five, forty percent of the project. It's just really expensive to do little additions that have to get heated and that, you know.
You just saw that, we actually said.
Yeah.
The ventilated, changing, you know.
I think Mike, that's where we are right now.
Okay.
I think you can focus on that, the specifics on that. Thank you.
Very well.
Because again, knowing how much our funds will dedicate to this, we, unlike the project, we can't set up, you know. It basically, what will the design involved buy into? See what it costs? Hopefully, that's the amount we will set us on. Very good. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Being helpful. Um. Launch number.
Any final submissions?
We got a report.
Yeah.
That was literally with the RCC report.
So I'm going to move to accept and file an FCC record.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Yeah, there's something I want to cut you off. You all set?
Yeah, I'm good.
But we'll keep you up.
All right.
Where, here.
No, I think we're, uh.
Where is the management? Anybody?
Yeah, um, Andy is, uh, engaged in an exercise today, so he asked me to take care of the side.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward. I'm going to move to approve the part-time finance administrative assistant, the DMA.
Seconded. So is this a modified job description, Rebecca, or a new?
No, this is, it's modified, it's really updated.
It's just updated, it's, it's, it's more like, okay, so it's nothing radical, it's just.
No, it's nothing radical, it's really, yes, yeah, I mean, the, the job title is a little bit different than it was, I think, before it was. Simply administrative assistant. Now it's finance and administrative assistant that really describes more what the position requires.
Any further discussion, Bill?
And my motion was a job description.
Yeah. Right, yeah, just. Motion to approve the job description.
Yeah, I'll have subsequent.
Anything further on the motion? Hearing on all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'm going to move to approve the hiring of Jessica Sherburne of, uh, excuse me, of Franklin as part-time finance administrative assistant. DMA effective November sixth.
Seconded. Discussion. Hearing on all favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion carries.
I move to approve the treasurer's bills and warrants as presented.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all favor?
Aye.
John, you're also?
Yeah.
And aye, motion carries. So. Scott, third quarter financials.
Yep, there's a lot of information there, um. Ensure everything's fairly, um, positive except for the jail. Still working on options, um, in the jail, even with the guys to some additional supplemental funding. Uh, for last year, still, still working on it, um. Yeah, it doesn't matter unless you have any questions. Everything, everything's flowing nicely, even the airport. Quite a, quite a difference between the second quarter and the third quarter for the airport. It's crazy.
Um, Monica, what's the deadline for towns to pay their taxes?
Maybe the towns have all paid.
They're all paid up. That's what makes a. Checkbook.
Yeah, that and the five point three million.
Oh, that five point three's in there?
Yes, yeah.
It's all the ones that we had.
Yeah, those that you see, the towns are standing to came in yesterday. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Monica and I worked on, uh. Rustling them up last week, week before. Yeah, the stragglers came in, uh, yesterday.
So I'm going to move to accept and file accounting administrators, third quarter financials report is presented, it's memo dated November second.
Seconded. Discussion. Hearing on all favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I do, third, aye.
Well, I do, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, there, yes, squeaky voice. I do want to mention too, though, if you got on the airport, um, if you remember, there were a couple of grants that were each over a million dollars of basically. Reimbursement money. We have, uh, I had Monica and Pam work together. And they each did a quarter, the first and second quarter. We, once, uh, one of the quarters got done and I submitted it to, uh, you remember Jason Homiak? He's engineer for the airport on all our EIP projects. Well, he submitted, he looked at it, gave us some recommendations for improvement, basically the spreadsheet. We sent it in, it was a hundred twenty K, um. And, uh, within a couple of days, we got the money. So we've sent in the second one, and we can go back as far as, uh, we go back to twenty twenty, so currently we're working on twenty twenty. To go back as far, um, a- again, if you're looking at the airport. Um, that's three plus years of, of reimbursement. Leroy and I have talked and we have a couple of ideas. I know that he wants to, uh, use these monies for some serious enhancements. Maybe in cooperation with the, with the AIP, but, uh, yeah. So a lot more on that later.
Great. So let's go on to, uh. Two thousand twenty-two budget. Uh. As you're familiar, the, uh. Budget advising committee's last action was to. Add a transfer that would reduce the increase to five percent, four hundred and twenty some thousand.
Four twenty-one, yes.
Out there on the, oh, that's about about. Now, uh. Scott, in thinking of that. We have a couple of options this year for transfers. One of them, which we never had before, is the lost revenue on our app. How close are you in telling us how specific that number's going to be?
Um, I would like a little bit more time to take another look at it. The number, um, the number that I've given you, I think is a large number. A little hesitant, uh, to recommend using the entire number. Half a million, I believe is what I, yeah, um. And so I'd just like to take another review and, and kind of, uh, take a look at some of the interpretation on, uh, it really comes down to, you know, some of the transfers. And as to where they came from, uh, what do they actually fall by as, as revenue, and depending on when they happen, that makes a difference in the comparison to the prior year.
Now, the other one's the undesigned.
The other option is the undesigned, which, yes, so that's, that's another new option for you this year, because this year there's a, a projected, um, surplus. Uh, thanks to deeds and, and some, um, management efforts that have reduced expenses. Uh, that's, that should be rather substantial. And right now, the county has a negative forty-three thousand, which if you remember last year. With another good year, we took care of, it was close to three hundred thousand at that point negative. So aside from taking that forty-three thousand, making it a positive number and covering the fifty thousand transfer last year. There's still a, a significant, uh, amount of money, another six figure that, uh, would help cover the transfer.
Two.
Falls over there, you know.
Yeah, I'm just curious, too, too early though to even estimate what that might be at the school.
Um, no, no, I'm fairly, I'm more confident in that one, and more comfortable with that one than I am the, um, the lost revenue.
Well, you got forty-three and fifty. Once you cover that, what do you think's left undesigned?
I, I would say at least two.
Two hundred?
Yeah, but another month allows us to continue that analysis and, uh, and make sure.
Well, if the five hundred thousand lost revenue was your first analysis and. Even if you became more conservative, I mean, we, we are not be able to count on a quarter of a million, right?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I would be comfortable with three fifty, um.
So between those two, we can cover that four twenty-one, correct?
Yeah, and remember, um, you know, I think I mentioned this a couple of times, that the transfer that you put in there, so say it's like, you know, it's a quarter. Yeah, and remember, you know, I think I mentioned this a couple of times, that the transfer that you put in there, so say it's like, you know, it's a quarter, $21,000 transfer. Based on my experience, you probably are not going to have to transfer that complete number. I would say half, maybe three quarter, but there is a possibility of transferring the full amount, but.
Obviously, we need to. We need to be somewhat assured that we, we have if we need.
Exactly. Yes, that's the right thing to do, yeah.
Now, Paul, John, the motion to. Apply the 421 number. Was a super majority. So if we want to reduce and get down to 5% with reductions, we're going to have to have a unanimous vote to transfer less. So if you're thinking about. Getting to the 5% with reduction in other accounts, then we'd have to have a unanimous vote because. They have forced us to put 421 something by a super majority vote. Just, just remember that because. It's, it's just a matter of, it's just a technicality we need to consider. Because my question now to you is, is there, do you want to go back into the budget and reduce any of those lines to meet that 5% and put less money in the transfer? Oh, I'm comfortable keeping the transfer. Sources. And not, and not touching anything else.
Well, my feeling is this, they, they. They talked about a bunch of ways to get to the, to their goal. You know, we've discussed three of them really. And, you know, to me, we need to, you know, we need a little more information before we solidify those numbers. And, you know, my goal would be to do that at the first meeting of the Senate. But they also talked about a couple of other things. One of the things, or. One of the things they talked about was flat funding Department 17. And. I kind of like that because that's what communities are doing, are having to do. That's what other counties are having to do. So no, I don't think that we need to go into the budget because A, they, we vetted that, they vetted that, and they didn't mention anything. But they did mention Department 17. And. I think that that's good practice. I, 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 you know, they, they didn't take action, but they certainly talked about it a few times. And I like that idea. In fact, I would propose that we do that. In fact, we have done that in all but. Four instances. And. Two of them. Are tiny. And the other two are. Not that significant. So. I, in other words, the first one is Hancock County Planning. You know, basically $4,000 there. And the other is restorative justice, which is a little more significant of $7,600.
No, it's 4,000.
No, it's, it's 15,000 to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the commissioners.
Yeah.
What did they do? I don't have the numbers for the.
I got it up here if you want, but yeah, I have an update.
What did they do?
They went back to the 16,5.
Just from my own book here, what they do, they, they didn't touch Eastern Main Development?
Uh, yeah, uh, no, no.
That's the same?
Same.
And.
The only two changes were restorative justice.
Back to 22,6?
Uh, they supported the 19.
19.
Okay, so they did support the 19, 1500 with planning commission. They put that.
15,000.
1500.
Can you print that?
Back to 16,5, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. Oh.
So what I'm looking at is, my statement is slightly inaccurate.
Oh, it is? Oh, whoops. I'm being told the premise again.
But to me, I think we should, I think that's a responsible thing to do. They thought that that was a responsible thing to do.
Well, in order, yeah.
And we really need to take them one at a time.
I'm just going to say, let's, let's look at this first to see what we're up against as far as their votes, because not all of them are super majority. Do you have their votes on each one of these?
I do, yeah, down below, yeah.
So Eastern Main Development was up $500. What did they, and they supported the 95?
Six to two.
So it's, that's a. That's a super majority, right?
Yeah, I think, yes, yeah.
Okay, the other increase was Down East Justice. What was that vote?
Five to three.
So that's not, right? That's, that's an even.
I wish I had that sheet so I could make a proper motion, but I.
Good.
Well, we're going to have to take these one at a time, but the next step, does it show the vote, the next?
Uh, yeah, this, this.
I tried to keep track of my. But I.
Yes. Uh, what was the question? Next step, step, oh, listen, next to now. I want to think, I think that was. Super majority, that was, what do you want?
Eight, nine, oh, that's super.
Oh, yeah, super. We follow it.
And planning commission?
Uh, five to one.
But this is simple.
Seven, eight, five.
It needs to be six.
Well, you had eight, you got five, so.
Needs to be two thirds, though. So that's not, that's a simple majority, not super, correct?
Correct, yes, right. Right, yeah, because the one, yeah, that was six to two, you would have got right.
Okay, so what I could do, who are the, who are the ones that weren't flat funded, I guess?
Start with Eastern Main Development. That was a super majority, so we'll take all three of us to, to. Reduce that back to 9,000.
Okay, Eastern Main Development. What was the other one, the next one?
Next one was Down East Restorative Justice. That is a simple majority. We take a simple majority, the board would reduce that back.
Okay.
And this one was next step. That is a super majority. Make all of us change that.
Yeah.
And the last one is planning commission. That's a simple majority. So John. So Jim, are you, are you open to flat funding Department 17? A some or all? Some or all?
Well, I can tell you what my intention is. And I, my intention is to make a motion on each one of those to flat fund them. If it goes. Great. If it doesn't, that's the end of the discussion.
Okay.
I, I, to me, I think we've, we, we beat a dead horse. Really, we can discuss it.
Okay, make, make your motion, Paul.
Yeah, so I'm going to move to flat fund Eastern Main Development Corporation.
You're going to reduce that from 95 to 9,000. Do I hear a second? Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. This will take all three of us to override that recommendation. So be clear on your vote. All those in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. That is now $9,000. The next motion.
I move to flat fund Down East Restorative Justice.
So that would be reduced from 19 to 15. Do I hear a second?
A second.
That's a simple majority. Would reduce that. Are you ready to vote? If so, Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yay.
And I'm in favor. That's reduced to 15,000. Next, wait.
Move flat fund next step.
Reducing it from 9,000 to 89,300, John. Seconded. That's going to take all of us. Paul, your vote?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I do not support that. Let's, let's, I don't know where that odd number came from. Let's, let's make that an even number, keeping it at 9,000. The last motion.
Uh, excuse me, move that platform Hancock, Hancock County Planning Commission.
Do I hear a second? Seconded. So that motion reduces that from 15 to 12,5. Takes a simple majority to make that happen. If you're ready to vote. Uh, I would make one comment, though, that. Planning Commission is, is back in the building phase. I mean, we, two years ago, we did nothing. We saw some hopes that they could get the feed under and we gave 12,5. This year. The director seems well on his way to bringing that back to. At least the glory days they used to have. And so I think that reflects the 15 that we had and. I'm. Do you know what it used to be back in the 18s, 19s, Scott?
I believe it was like 16,5.
16,5.
I think it was close to that number, yeah.
So, I mean, three, four, five years ago, we were 16, 17,000 and, and I think they, they play a very valuable role, so. I'm going to tell you that I'm not in favor of moving that, but it only takes you two. So I'm going to call a vote. Paul?
Yes.
John?
Nay.
Nay? And I vote nay, so that stays at 15. Okay, is that everything you want to do with 17?
Yeah, and, and the reason we went through this exercise was that, that was a suggestion. I listened to it, I, you know. And the votes came, I understand.
So does that look correct? EMBC went down to 9,000. voted flat on that. Children's Friends stayed.
I only addressed the ones that weren't flat.
Right, Down East went down to 15.
Correct.
UMaine stayed, Soil and Water stayed, Next Step stayed, HC stayed, and Hancock County Fire Riders stayed.
Correct, correct. So what could we effectively do there, Scott?
I'm not so sure. You did a whole lot. So like 500? Uh, 4500? Yep, that's the difference between, yeah, that's the difference between these two numbers and, and 4500.
Okay, so if we still stepped into 421, whatever that number is that BAC gave us, we could add a budget that would be just a few dollars under 5% increase.
Well, right now, so right now you're 4.97.
4.97.
What you don't have on your sheets is yesterday afternoon, I found the sheet with the state's growth income factor, which is much higher than I even anticipated. So plugging that in right now and with the savings that you, you just took out or put back in, you're under LD by $13,312.
Wait a minute, that's the goal. Wait a minute. We need to add another amount to the budget. Have we done that yet, Scott?
I don't believe it.
That would have happened after the BAC meeting, so.
Right.
Uh, we need to add the death benefit amount we have to pay each year, guys. Know what I'm talking about, Paul?
Okay.
So that's kind of the win there. Where did we decide to put that? The commissioner's budget or the treasurer's budget? Where was that?
Uh, no, I think I have designated Department 30, which is the reserves, which is also where the. Crap, it is not. Why isn't it? Well, no, that would make sense. So. Do we remember what that number was, Rebecca?
Um, I can look at my email.
So let's go to eat up that and then some.
32,000.
Yeah.
32,4, 32,450.
Well.
We wouldn't have it, Paul. It's something they developed since our last meeting.
No, I, yeah, but my point is we probably can still get to the LD using, you know, the budget, the, the transfer and the, you know, the other items that we talked about earlier.
Well, the motion was not to reduce the budget to 5% increase. The motion was to transfer 421 odd thousand. So if this budget turns out to be a 5.01% increase, we don't, that's, we don't need a vote on the transfer, correct, Scott? Their vote was not to come up with a 5% increase. Their vote was to transfer 421.
I think, I think in the end they hold more, well, in the end, as long as all three of you agree, then it's kind of a win point.
It is, yeah.
Um, I think there's more. Backing in the final percentage amount than necessarily the transfer. I did all, although it works, one of the same.
That certainly was their discussion. I don't know, I'd have to look at what that.
What I'm actually saying is technically, if we didn't do anything to transfer, we've met intent, not intent, we, we met the technical requirement of their vote.
If you don't touch the transfer, right, correct.
421, so we don't, even though this may end up being, if we have to add 32,000 worth of budget. Then this is going to be more than the 5%.
It, it is, yes. I just did that.
Well, I'll put it this way. My goal would be to reduce, you know, to reduce that even to get to the LD number. And we just have to unanimously do it. If we don't, then we fall back on this, but I. There, I'd have to reread their message, but their motion, but to me, their message was clear.
But we need to, they have voted on reserves.
Yes.
So we need to have a. We need unanimous vote to, to add the 32,000 odd money, whatever that number is today, so that we can get that in there because that needs to be added to the budget after they gave us a recommendation. You have that number yet, Rebecca?
Yeah, I just sent it to Scott.
Okay.
Can you say it all louder?
Um, yeah. Hang on. 32,708.
So, Jim.
Hang on, hang on. Wrong dollar, wrong cell.
And what are we adding this?
Department 30.
Yeah.
So it'd be a new number.
Yeah, that puts you just shy of 5 and a half percent, 45.47, and you're about, well, you're 19,396 over LD.
So would this be employee cost or this is going to be separate reserve line?
I'll, I'll put in this, a separate line.
Separate line.
Yeah.
So gentlemen, we need a vote today to add 32,708 to a new line in Department 30 for 2022.
So should I? How about this for a draft? I'm going to, I'm going to move that 32,708 to Department 30 to cover the, a death benefit. In the Sheriff's Department.
No, it's not Sheriff's Department.
Well, I mean, okay.
Just to cover a death benefit.
To cover a, a death benefit.
John, seconded. Okay, so the motion's made and seconded. You guys, Scott, you and Rebecca, okay with that? Okay.
Uh, yeah, my only question is, do you want to reference to the record, the name?
Yeah, well, that's why, that's why I'm asking. I, I, I mean, it's implied, but I think we should mention.
I think the name just on this on record should be.
Yeah, so.
Employee's name, yeah, W. Lou Grocer.
Well, it's, the benefit is for Lauren, so the benefit would be for Lauren Groves. That's.
Right, our employee is, however, some, some reference to girls, yeah.
What is the, what's the motion? Move that 32,708.
Move to add thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars to Department, uh, Thirty to cover, uh, this figure here should say Lauren Gross's death benefit. To cover I think it should say Luke Gross.
Well, his, it was his death, it's her benefit, so. Oh, yeah, let's go with Luke Gross.
Yeah, it's cover the Lu, the Luke Gross death benefit.
Right. All right.
Seconded.
Yeah, she definitely is your Luke Gross.
Okay, John, with that?
Yeah.
Seconded. Okay, you okay with that, Rebecca? All right, now that takes unanimous vote, gentlemen, so we, we need to have that vote on record as how you voted. Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I do. So that motion carries, and it's a change to the BAC's recommendation on Department Thirty.
Okay, so I wanna be, because I, I'm, I'm gonna have a subsequent motion to set December seventh to finalize the budget. But I think that hopefully what we can do on December seventh is do some of this analysis that Scott was talking about. And have a goal of coming to coming in under L D. I think we can do it with, uh, with, uh, you know, with the items that we've talked about, I think it's possible.
Come under L D?
Yeah.
Not, not once you, you'd have to make more changes in order to
No, you could, there's some, uh, there's some, uh,
Oh, you could, yeah, so you, you increase your transfer mod, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, to get us there.
Right.
Is, is that, do I have it right? I'm new to this, so.
You have it right, yeah.
I, I, I just don't think it's that important. And it takes a, some, some majority of the commissioners and whatnot to override the, uh,
Well, here's why I think it's important. I mean, I, I, the, the, the BAC certainly talked about it. And I think our communities are would like to see that.
But the thing is, that doesn't recognize the bank we have. In other words, we have, what? How much that we have in net adds up to that amount, right?
Not sure of the question.
In other words, if, if, if we had a three point five, we only use three, we can bank five of that, perhaps for ten, for future years.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
And that's, and we've got
Oh, eight hundred thousand.
So I'm, what, what I'm saying, Paul, is that we have been able to bank those unused percentages prior to years. And if this, all this does, this might increase the the annual amount, but we still are growing off of bank amounts that we had from previous years. The statute allows us to do that. That's why I'm saying this isn't that important, if you're not talking substantial amount of money, even living.
The commissioners have talked between, Bob and Six, that was the message you gave to the BAC. They went across to the low end at five, and if you sit at five and a half, I call it a handshake compromise.
Well, given that four twenty-one, four twenty-one odd money.
Yeah, and if they didn't know about, they, of course, they didn't know about this additional item that came up, so, uh, yeah.
Okay, I, I guess I go. I, I understand the concept. I still like the idea of coming in under L D.
You like it under L D, yeah.
But, but I, I, I guess I understand your point.
So it would be roughly seven hundred and forty thousand.
And, and really, to be honest, we're, we're splitting hairs.
How would you, how would you attempt to do that, though? You know, what would you do? Add more transfer?
Add more transfer. In other words, transfer, well, add more transfer. I'm not sure where the transfer is coming from yet, because we don't have that analysis, but I think there's enough, enough in these accounts, transferable accounts, I should say, to get us up, under the L D. That's the only point I'm making.
Okay, it is splitting hairs. Chew on that for two weeks and see if you want to pursue that in two weeks.
Yeah.
Because
Yes.
I don't. I'll chew, I'll chew on that in two weeks. We'll see where we come in.
Okay, yeah, anyways.
See what regurgitates from that.
So I'm gonna move to set a date of December seventh.
Uh, Paul, I don't see this necessarily.
Well, the only reason I thought it was necessary is because it was a question of when do we want to finalize?
Well, we know we have to finalize before the fifteenth, the seventeenth, it's the last opportunity we have.
Okay.
But the bottom line is, if we don't do it by the, until the twenty-second, that's the penalty.
Okay.
So truth is, is that, I mean, I think
Just wanted to make sure you were aware of this all.
Yeah, I, I, when, when I see a question like that, I, I like to have a motion to answer it, but there's no reason for it.
General consensus is, no way that in December seventh, we can finalize the twenty-two budget.
Yeah, that wasn't a question, it was a suggestion. Other worded.
Uh,
Oh, we should set a date to finalize the budget, yeah.
So we have.
Uh, yes, yeah.
By general consensus, we know it's no way that it So, uh, back to our agenda.
Move to approve the twenty twenty-two holiday schedules presented.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I really hate to bring this up, but just so that it's on record, this June teeth is not on there. Uh, I think it's a couple options. Add it, make adjustments elsewhere, but that's, that's going to require talking to the union, or see what the union's response is to it.
Quite honestly, my personal opinion is that we're very, very generous with that benefit program, and this, uh, this is just another
Just wanted to make sure that it was your way.
President Trump's birthday, maybe I'd be Oops. So my motion stands, and it was seconded, right?
Right. So if you want June teeth, you want to vote no on the motion?
No, you, you should, if you want June teeth, you should move that amendment motion.
I don't think it's any Sean, do you want to see June, the, the June teeth?
Well, I'm not exactly sure how it can't be in it if it's a federal holiday.
Hi, Ron. Sure, we can, we can designate any, any days we want for benefit. It has paid for in there.
Um, yeah.
That one scratches my head every time.
Well, that's a made a mask one. Well, so that's why I brought up a conversation. You could switch out, you could say, you know, just like the day after Thanksgiving. It's not related.
That one makes me scratch my head, too.
Yeah, so, uh, but I think if you, you know, before you did that, you could, you could certainly do that to non-union. But before you did it with union, it would require a conversation.
Yeah.
Took off. And I think it would be, so I, I, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call a vote. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries two one. Uh, I just noticed that, uh, we're having November Friday's Thanksgiving feast.
Next Tuesday.
It's Thursday, it's coming Thursday, right?
So, next Tuesday?
Oh.
Nice.
Next Monday?
It's Monday?
Is that Monday?
Oh, I thought you called me Tuesday, but, oh.
I'll tell you what, that is good.
Yeah, you, uh, yeah, if you haven't hit one of those, you should. Bring your, yeah, bring your appetite.
That's good, Jerry.
Where is that?
Right, the Red Street Eve.
The only other item I have is just an update on tax abatements. I'm working with, still with the legal. Um, I'm going to really emphasize, and I think I'm at that point where I need to finalize those for the next meeting, so we can get these people their, their, the decisions. However, um, and I'll send you the new format. I've kind of found a different format that addresses some of the concerns that I've heard back from the feedback. I like it a whole lot better. I've never really liked the problem, the document we use.
The format that we, that we state and effects on.
Exactly, yeah. It, yeah, and it's really more like a, it's like a legal brief. I mean, you know, like we get served papers that says Hancock County, or, or says the, you know, say, um, taxes appeal abatement, you know, the name versus Sullivan, and in the court of the Hancock County Commissioners, you know, something like that. That's kind of the design of it. Then it has sections that are much more to the point, uh, much more succinct, and, uh, yeah. So unless you really don't approve, I'll, I'll do one, and I'll send it to you to see how you like it. Or else, I'll just send the, I can send the format and see what you like. I'll do that first, but
I never, I never took much, I paid much attention to the form and the information on it, so if you submit that in a different way.
I think the form allows for the information to get on there in a better format, yeah, yeah.
Do you remember looking at the abatement laws, whether or not the initial abatement request to the community had to be heard by a board? By the, by the selectmen or board of assessors, if, if they had one?
If they have a board of appeals, it needs to go to them. Yes, it doesn't come here. If the town hasn't, is that what you're asking?
No. After all these years of doing abatements and whatnot, I just don't know, they, they don't have a hearing for the abatement request in general. He sits down with the assessor, who basically talks it all over and decides whether or not he wants to grant a reduction or not, which
Well, I, I don't know how accurate my interpretation of it was, but in reading the materials, listening, the opportunity was given to the abatement, uh, to the individual, the property tax owner, but, uh, they didn't attempt, and that session is also held during the selectment meeting. So there's another opportunity. Now, whether or not there's better communication?
I didn't get that. I, I thought he said that it's a town that authorized, you know, to hear the abatement request.
They do, and then he takes his request to the board. I think that's, that really is kind of, I don't think a lot of abatements go to the board, but my experience, but
Okay.
Yeah, anyway.
Move to adjourn. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, would you adjourned?